They don't know anybody by now. We've got a problem.
Anyone needing a paper for your question?
Hey, I almost didn't recognize you with that hat on. Try that because you're quiet. That's not you, Norman. Hey, I almost brought your box of stuff. And I'm tired of waiting for songs. I'm really tired of waiting for these days. It's not, it's not bad. How are you, Your Honor? All right, Dixon, you remember these? No?
I wasn't born, Dave.
Yeah, that's all. Actually, you, I think you were two.
Yeah, maybe two.
The other one signed in. I got a camera right there, but I'm not gonna stand there. Go ahead and be up here at the same time. They cost money. You know, I can't do all this. Over a hundred people. It's too warm up here. It's got my name tag here.
I will be bringing around a sign sheet, so you don't have to come up to me.
Wait, wait.
Hello, welcome to the Dayton unit in NAACP Dayton City Commission Candidates Forum, where we are here to want to be able to educate somebody, educate all of you through the, through the mouths of each one of these candidates who are seeking the office of Dayton City Commission. One week from today, there is a primary. And as you see, there is a field of six candidates. And that on next Tuesday, one week from today, will be go down to actually four candidates on Tuesday evening after all the ballots has been counted. Then from Tuesday until the general election, four names will proceed on to the general election. And then once the general election is over, we'll come out with our two new seated commissioners. So we want to make certain that, that everybody had an opportunity to listen to all of the candidates today and to get a good feel for who you're going to be voting for next Tuesday in the primary election. So, and how we have people seated is I want to welcome Marcus Beddinger down on the end. And they, and they're seated by their date in alphabetical order. Marcus Beddinger, Valerie Duncan, David Ezroti, Matt Joseph, Chris Shaw, and Jordan Worthing. So each one of these individuals are vying for the office of Dayton City Commission. We have two incumbents, which is Matt Joseph and Christopher Shaw. And there are four other candidates that are seeking to, for those particular offices. So with that, I want to turn it over to our political action chair, Tom Roberts, so he can give some ground rules. And then we'll get into the question and answers. We want to have questions that's coming from, well, we've got questions coming from the Dayton Unit NAACP members. And also I have some questions coming from community members that are associated with our roundtable.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome all of you to our annual Candidates Forum. This is the forum for the candidates for the Dayton City Commission. Two ladies up front, candidates have, each question will be asked, you have two minutes. Two minutes to ask the question. The yellow, answer the question. Yellow part means you have thirty seconds. The red means stop. We will stop you. Okay, we will stop you because we want to make this flow. And so don't force me to do something that you don't want me to do. Just respect each other and know you have two minutes, so marshal your time. There will be several people who will be passing around questions. We will ask the questions. The President and I will ask the questions. So if you have a question, put them on a piece of paper and we will ask the question. We may not ask the question specifically that you ask because we're going to put them together. If there are several questions asking similar questions, we'll ask one big question as opposed to three different questions. So don't come up afterwards and say, well, you didn't answer my question. Tell you upfront, I'm going to ask the question. We're going to ask the questions. You're going to assist us, as President Forward said. You're going to give us some questions. We've asked our membership to give us questions and we've gotten a bunch of questions from our members throughout the last two days. And so between President Forward and myself, we will be asking the questions. Red is stop. We will have a two-minute timer. Thirty seconds, two-minute timer. Any questions about the rules? And we will try and stay in order, you know, and we may mix it up, you know, so you don't, we'll mix it up. I'm sure we'll mix it up. I guarantee you that because I like doing that. Anybody here? We're cool? People who are passing out questions can just kind of raise your hands. Terrence Williams is one. So if you have a question, there's a piece of paper, pass it to one of these individuals. Okay, Mr. President.
So we're going, going at this time, have our second vice president, political action chair, to ask the first question.
Well, I'm going to ask each candidate to give us a two-minute introduction of yourselves. Who you, why would you want to be on the Dayton City Commission? You have two minutes. Who are you? And we'll start from here. Are we standing?
It's up to you.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for the invitation tonight. I am Marcus Beddinger. I'm born and raised in Dayton. I lived in Travelwood specifically, grew up in Townview, which I say is as close as you can get to Dayton physically and Travelwood as possible. The West Side was my stepping grounds growing up. I went to Revival Center. I was in the Dayton Boys Choir. And when I was a child, I saw a lot of problems in our community that, you know, the alleyways were dark. There were abandoned homes back then. There are even more now. The trash, the glass, the broken glass, all of these problems existed back then. I'm thirty-four years old now, so here we are twenty years later. And when I walk out of my door in Roosevelt, I live in Roosevelt neighborhood, excuse me, I see the same things. The house next door is abandoned. The city cuts the grass. The trees are overgrowing the power lines. And it's been like that for the three years that I've lived there. I moved home from New York during the pandemic to be closer to my family because it got really tough. But that has persisted since I moved there. The trees scared the living daylights out of my other neighbor, a nice gentleman, Mr. Allen, who would give you the shirt off his back, but that house scares him. And down the street earlier this week, a house burned to the ground at Woodward and Second Street. I woke up smelling smoke in my house. That's what people are dealing with in Dayton. It's multiplied thousands of times over across all of our communities. And we need to answer the tough questions. We have people here who are running for potentially their twenty-fourth year in office. What have you done in a neighborhood like Roosevelt? We have to ask the tough questions because the answers are tough. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Valerie Duncan, and I'm running for the Dayton City Commission. I represent, I want to represent the people. I want to represent the, the homeowners. I want to represent the homeless. I want to represent the abused women. I want to represent all the people that the city has forgotten about. I want to establish a homeownership for all the residents in the city of Dayton. And I want to do that by a comprehensive plan that will give people an, an opportunity to own a home if they want to, to fix their home if they want to, to restore homes if they want to. And the homeless and the abused women, all these people that have fallen by the wayside, we need to address our, our dilemma. There's so many gaps in our social programs and these people are falling into cracks. And what's going, and what's being affected is our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are being affected because the homeless people are living in these empty houses, right? They're living in these empty houses. They get cold at night. They start a fire. That's what happened to that mansion. And then it all goes up in smoke. That one large mansion was going to be coming up for auction. Look what happened to the Wright Brothers Manufacturing Establishment that, that went up in smoke too. And this is the reason. And then are you going to live? Our people are living next to these, these structures. And it's becoming unsafe. So I want to do that plus get the chemicals out of our water supply and help youth with their education and their, their development. And I hope I have all of your votes. I'm the only woman on, on the, is a candidate and I hope I, I get your support.
Hi, my name is David Ezroti. I've been doing this for thirty years. And you say, why is he still doing this for thirty years? Some people don't quit. You know, I could tell you one thing. If you put a filter on what's happened in Dayton in the last thirty years and you want it all to make sense, it's really simple. The people who run this city in the back room don't work for you. The Montgomery County Democratic Party, who tells you who to vote for, they work for the demolition contractors. And once you figure that out, that they work for the demolition contractors and the developers, everything makes sense. I don't mean, you know, I brought literature from thirty years ago and I can start reading this and you'll say the same problems exist today. I can bring literature from twelve years ago, the same problems exist today. If you vote for these two incumbents, the same problems will exist four years from now, two years from now. It won't change. There are two people on this commission that have been trying to stop the rack, the backroom deals. Shanice Turner Sauce and Darryl Fairchild. It takes three votes to fix anything. If you remove one of those two, things will change. If you reelect them, the demolition contractors win, the developers win, and we lose. Now, I'm not going to tell you a story about my neighborhood being bad because my neighborhood in the last thirty years has done great. Because I understand how to development works, how working with the people to develop social capital works, how making a neighborhood that people want to live in makes more people want to come and live there. That's what we need to do to the whole city. I can drive through the West Side and I see no progress. I can drive through downtown and while they say there's progress, it's not the same. Thank you.
Mr. Joseph?
Thank you. I'm Matt Joseph. I'm the city commissioner. I'm a logistician for my day job and I work for it. I've been commissioner for a while now, as a member a couple of times. I really appreciate, in fact, the citizens have elected me a couple of times to be a commissioner. I love the work. I do it because I love the city and I love our residents. Because I want to, I want to make sure that the city is something that I turn over to my kids and my grandkids in better shape than, than I was when I started. Forums like this are great. I appreciate it. You got the Forward, Senator Roberts, appreciate your putting this together, everybody who helped set it up. Especially since the, the primary election is coming up so quickly. It's really important that you all have a chance to hear from all of us and maybe just as important that we have a chance to hear from you. With the election so close, I know it wasn't easy to do this and I really appreciate you all doing that. It has been a tough few years. There is no way around it. From the housing crisis, foreclosure crisis twenty years ago, to the Great Recession, to tornadoes and everything that happened in the last few years followed by the pandemic. It has not been easy, but we have done okay. And there is a great possibility of doing much better now. You can see that with the last decade, we've knocked down thousands of old houses that could never be used again. As, as I've walked through the neighborhoods and knocked on doors over these last few weeks, I can see the difference from, from years before. You can see the difference. Neighborhood is coming back. There are thousands of new jobs created. People are working again. And we've made strides, maybe most importantly, on making our city a city where everyone can thrive. No matter what you look like, where you come from, what language you speak, who you love, it doesn't matter. We want to be welcoming the city and we want to make sure everybody is empowered and has resources and, and things they need to be successful. Thank you.
I'm, I'm Chris Shaw, Dayton City Commissioner. I am, first of all, I want to thank the, the NAACP for this forum tonight. Thank, thanks to all of the members that are here today. I am one of you, a life member of this organization. I've spent a lot of time volunteering with this organization for, through the former chair of the Economic Development Department. I am a small business owner in this community. My, my family has owned a business just up the street, some blocks up the street for a hundred and thirteen years. I, I understand what it takes to make business grow in a community. And I'm really concerned about making connectivity with the workforce. That we are bringing our young people into the workforce through apprenticeship programs, which I helped if, if LCIO in the Building Trade Union, go to Washington DC and bring back hundreds of thousands of dollars to stand up these programs. Because we know how important it is and it's starting to pay dividends. You know, these are good paying jobs, fifty, eighty, a hundred thousand dollar jobs. And it's about making these connections. David Ezroti is right. I'm not in the pocket of developers, but we are encouraging development in the city because that's how you grow the neighborhoods. The work that we do in downtown Dayton funds up to seventy percent of the development in this neighborhood and your neighborhood. So we've got to continue that. Making very good strides and we're going to, if elected again, I'm going to continue to do that work. Bringing transportation money back here, bringing HUD money, CDBG money. Traveling to Washington DC and lobbying for just that, just returned last week from doing that same thing. So I want to continue to do that work and I'm going to ask you to vote.
Hello, I just want to thank you guys for coming here. I just want to show my appreciation to Mr. Forward and NAACP and the members that are here. It's wonderful to see, we have citizens who are engaged, willing to drive here to see our seven candidates and see what the platforms are. So I'm Jordan Worthing and I'm running for Dayton City Commissioner. I'm born and raised in West Dayton. I went to Shawnee Julian High School. I graduated in two thousand and seven. Immediately I went to University of Cincinnati. I studied communications, criminal justice, and business. I graduated from the University of Cincinnati in two thousand and eleven. Immediately I came back, took the Dayton Police Test. Now, why I took the Dayton Police Test? I was a daddy's boy. My dad was a police officer. So this is near and dear to my heart. This isn't a job. This is my passion. This is what I live for. I'm the son of a fighter. My mom's a fighter. My dad's a fighter for principle, for community, for transparency and for accountability. My dad participated in Black Fraternity Police. This is something I, I know some of you may know very well and some you may not. Historically, civil rights was a big struggle in the city of Dayton. There was a lot of people died going across the river and fighting for civil rights. We've made progress, but I think we have a lot more progress to make. That was initially what I wanted to be. I wanted to resemble my dad. My dad had a rapport with the citizens. He was a homicide detective. My dad was one of the few. He was a cop that you knew his name, his first and last name. You could call him and you know he would come and treat you with respect. Now, I wanted to be like that. Going into the Dayton Police Department was a fantastic, fantastic experience, eye-opening experience. I think there's a lot of progress we should make within our city services. There's transparency issues. There's accountability issues that I think you all are aware of and that's why you're here. Because you think that we do need change for the better. And the three things that I think we're all going to talk about is going to be the neighborhood advancement, the blight, the issues in our neighborhood, transparency, accountability, investment in our youth, jobs, high-paying jobs. And last, we want more participation. We want more civic-led engagement, engagement between our commissioners. Certain commissioners are going out to communities, certain ones aren't. And I think you know who they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. So as you've heard, the opening remarks from our six candidates whose names will appear on the ballot next week, one week from today. You've had an opportunity to hear opening speeches and now we're going to get into the Q and A session. But what I want to say is thank all of you for coming out and thank you for being respectful of each person to give them their time and their space to state who they are. Thank you.
The first question, the, the goal of the city of Dayton is to provide service amenities and open government, yet expect, expect a first-class city, a hub of thriving region. So my question to you as a candidate for city commission and city commi, city commissioners, what services do you think we're providing well? What amenities and open government? And we'll start at the end and work our way down again.
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
So I think right now you can go to the city of Dayton and you can actually get a lot of great services and that's really important. What we need is more of that. We need city commissioners who are present in our neighborhoods. Now, I had experience working for the federal Congress, for a member of Congress when I lived in New York. And I worked in nonpartisan constituent services. So what that meant is when constituents in the area had trouble with federal agencies, they came to our office and we connected them to those resources. We need a lot more of that in Dayton. Just as I've been running, people come, come to me, message me on social media and say, hey, how can I register my business as a minority-based enterprise? How can I register my business as woman-owned? We, you shouldn't have to come to a candidate for office for that. You should be able to go to your city and, and get a response. And they, they said to me, they've reached out to a number of people, they get nothing back. And so there's a disconnect between what the city offers and actually making it accessible to the city. Commissioner Shaw mentioned the jobs, the high-paying jobs. We need high-paying jobs. But if the people who live here in Dayton aren't connected to them, then who are you creating jobs for? And so just across the board, there's a disconnect between what we say is happening and what people are able to access. And so if you need two and three degrees for a job or if you don't have transportation to access the job, you're not really creating work. You know, you're, you're creating talking points. And the same goes with our city services. We have to make sure people can access what we say we provide. And that's my perspective on the issue.
Okay, so, yes, the city provides services in waste collection. They have parks and rec. They have different departments that, you know, are like public works for the streets or water. But they are not, those services are not meeting the needs of the neighborhood. Our housing inspection unit, it used to have thirty-six inspectors. Now it dwindled down to two because of block grant money. When that went out the window, our housing inspectors went out the window. They didn't change it over to general fund. I asked Nan Welling when she was the mayor when they were going to switch over to the general fund. She said in two thousand and eighteen that, that didn't happen then. And the results are, we have all these abandoned, rundown, dilapidated houses that under Matt Joseph's watch and Chris Shaw. So we need to revitalize our, our neighborhoods. They, they are, you know, some that need a wrecking ball. But there's a lot of things that can be revitalized in our neighborhoods and that's where I'm coming from. There's so many programs that we, we can introduce. And there are, I have friends of mine that have two or three different jobs. Some of my friends went back to work to help their grandchildren and their nieces and nephews and everything else. So there is a gap between what we say or what we promise. Like the, the North Main Corridor, we've been talking about developing that for I don't know how many years. It's still the way it is on North Main. So with your help, I'll get it going again. Thank you.
Back when I first bought my house in nineteen eighty-six and what got me started in the political sphere, I bought a house for fourteen thousand five hundred dollars in South Park. No signs anywhere saying it was a historic district. First thing I'm doing is trying to fix it up. I put new garage doors up. City takes me to court because the garage doors were wood grain vinyl instead of wood or vinyl not imitating wood. And this is when there was a steel and plastic dumpster right there. So I go down to City Hall and I plead my case and it's like talking to a wall. No response. I was the bad guy. I had to take that door down, those doors down, and put up inferior doors that had to be replaced. That was their idea of making things work. Penalizing people for fixing up their houses and they still do it. And the people who don't do it, you end up paying for their mistakes. And we cannot demolish our And we cannot demolish our way to prosperity. I would rather spend the money that they're spending with Steve Roush and blade cutters on fixing houses that people live in so that they are gonna be able to stay there and survive. I would rather have open, honest government that's transparent, that doesn't give a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars to a guy who once beat up five Dayton police officers while ignoring my friend John Lumpkin, who's an Ohio State football star and a former banker and a great guy. He hasn't got a dime for his building in Wright Dunbar. Can you explain how these things happen? I sure can. I know lots of small businesses that have started in this city without any help from the, the city, because that's what I do in my business. Thank you.
So, the question was, what services and cities does the, services and amenities does the city provide well? I'll mention two that, that are near and dear to my heart. First is recycling. When I started, there wasn't any such things as recycling bins in the city. Over the time I've been here, we've expanded it, and now after a couple weeks, I think recycling picked up. It's not only the right thing to do because it means less trash going into the, into the dump. It's also better, a lot of the times, it's cheaper to do it that way, too. Second thing I would talk about is the way that we fought to bring back curbside leaf pickup. A lot of folks that live in neighborhoods with big trees, for a few years, had to bag the leaves. It's a lot of work, especially since there are a lot of city-owned neighborhoods. So, we were able to figure out a way at much less cost to bring back curbside leaf pickup. And the last one I want to talk about is a recent one, something we do well. Over the last year, almost year now, we've had a unit called Mediation Response Unit, which instead of when people call for help for a situation that would be better handled by somebody who's unarmed, somebody who's not a policeman or a police officer, we send a mediation person, Mediation Response Unit to that. And it's been wildly successful, so much so that our officers are asking for them to respond to more. So, I'm really proud of that service. I think that it helps keep the tension down, lowers the heat in some of those interactions, and provides better service for our citizens. Thank you.
Well, you stole a lot of my thunder. That's all right. So, transparency in terms of services and amenities in the city. We do a survey every year to ask you how you feel about your city government and the work that we're doing in the community across all the departments. Public Works is always very high on the list, and, you know, we rely on getting your feedback in terms of how we plan for how we're gonna budget for, for the coming year. Issue nine, thanks to you, we are able to get funding to repave all of the, all of the roads, the side roads, and that work is starting to happen. It's, it's been happening, we're coming to the end of a very successful program. The Parks, Parks and Rec, now, we've had some issues there. It was not good to us in that, in that way. We are trying to strengthen our, our pools, our aquatics program, but we need more lifeguards. So, the work that I have been doing is, again, trying to connect young people and others with these high-paying, in-demand jobs in order to help us provide the services to keep the wrecked and parked facilities open and provide those services to our youth. We can't do that without your help, without, you know, kids getting into the lifeguard program so that we can staff these, these operators, but we're doing that work. So, there's, there are a lot of good things happening. I'm very proud of the work that our, our city staff has been doing under very difficult situations, and this is across the board. You know, we didn't get into the situation that we're in now overnight, it's about forty years, and we won't get out of it overnight, but we're making strides every day trying to work to make this city better. And we're gonna keep doing that, and if you let me, we are going to continue this work and make it even more robust and, and strengthen our communities and the services and amenities that you want. But we're gonna continue to ask for it.
Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for that question. That was a great question. I'll be blunt, there's not many things that go great. For example, our city commission meeting, I'm honored that commissioners come once a week, every Wednesday, and allow you to talk to them for three minutes. But I'm really not a, a public speaker, I don't think a lot of you are public speakers, and to go to a commission meeting and to have everybody stare at you for three minutes and talk, and then respond, I think that's somewhat good, but I think we need way more dialogue. Certain commissioners are going out to communities, doing town hall Q and As, questions and answers. Where does that create? Dialogue. If I'm elected commissioner and you ask me a question, I have to give you a response, either I know the answer or I don't know the answer. It creates trust, accountability. But the current setup now is, you go to the microphone, you talk for three minutes, and then you're threatened to be placed under arrest if you talk second afterwards. My dad and my mother are big into civil rights in, in terms of holding the, the government accountable. There's one thing I do like, the Dayton Delivers Act. When I was a police officer, you were called, and you had to pop, for example, trash, a hole in the ground. I was a fixer, I, I would fix it myself. I'd call dispatch and say, hey, at one-two-six West Norman, we got such-and-such problem. This is ten, fifteen years ago. So, our dispatch would, would parlay that to a, to an unknown city function, there was no, you didn't get a, a, a case number, you couldn't go online, you couldn't go through your phone and get problems solved. So, Dayton Delivers Act, I think is a pretty, pretty good idea. I think it could be enhanced in terms of where, where are you in alignment? And Mr. Parks, Mr. John Parks, who's head of Waste Collection and Recycle, I think our waste collection is great. I love Mr. Parks, he's very responsive. If you had an issue with your trash can being stolen, call Mr. Parks. If you don't have his number, I'll give it to you tonight after this meeting. He'll come and replace your trash can. If you're saying stop?
I'm sorry.
We're here to critique things, not to talk about how great things are going. We're all here born and raised in Dayton. Our minority business development has pretty much been decimated. One candidate talked about housing inspectors, that's when I was a police officer, it was forty, fifty, and I was a few, it's on one hand. The emergency orders that we see, certain commissioners just abuse, they're doing it left and right, sneaking through things that you don't know of, and things are just being snuck through. It's lacking transparency. Human Relations Council, that's pretty much just been decimated.
Thank you. We're gonna mix it up a bit. We're gonna start with Mr. Joseph, we'll go that way, and begin up here. And those that are listening are saying they cannot hear some of you, so I'm just gonna ask you to talk to the people at the wall so they can hear. So, go ahead, Dr. Ford, with your next question.
Okay, this question here is coming from one of our community partners. And it says, and this is more specifically going to the incumbents, but I would like to hear from the other candidates as well, but just in a different format. Are, are there any plans to bring more businesses to West Dayton? For example, Sugar Creek, which employs people in the neighborhood? So, that question should go first to the two sitting commissioners, and then what would the other candidates do if you were in their chair at the same time?
Thank you, Dr. Ford. Question is, businesses, new businesses and new jobs to West Dayton? Something that I learned as a city commissioner is that the best way to create more jobs is to support the businesses that are already there. The questioner mentioned Sugar Creek, which is a great employer and a great neighbor. We do everything we can to make sure that they're expanding there, to make sure that they're hiring our folks, to make sure that we're, we're doing everything we can to walk through. And they're not the only example, they're a great example. So, trying to make sure that we're taking care of the employers who are here, so they keep hiring is, is, is very important to us. As far as attracting new, this is Commissioner Shaw's thing, so I'm gonna let him talk mostly about it, but I will say that we're excited about some of the entrepreneurship opportunities we have with our Entrepreneur Center. We're reaching out west, we have folks reaching out to people with ideas, helping them develop them into business plans. We have these efforts funded, and through our new office at the Arcade, the Entrepreneur Center, we're gonna make sure that they have the network and the resources that they need to, to bring those fruition. But I don't want to steal Commissioner Shaw's thunder again. I would like to answer.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, that is very near and dear to my heart, attracting businesses to our community, to supporting the ones that are already here. We have a very robust process for that and the procurement enhancement plan. I was one to help create that many, many years before I ever thought about running for office because I drew on my experiences in the business community. And we put together a good program, it's a, it's a perfect note. When we first started that, it had a lot of teeth in it. We had some compliance that was very robust. We had joint ventures that we used to strengthen and, and help small businesses that are just out on their own to get funding and to get bonding, which was really important. But we're starting to see businesses grow in West Dayton. West Dayton Incubator, and Commissioner was just talking about the Arcade downtown and the Entrepreneur Center, making connectivity into the neighborhoods, and that was intentional. We made it very clear that that's what we wanted. So, I talked to you about traveling to DC to bring back resources here, what did that? I'm on the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee for the National League of Cities, and I was able to bring back two hundred thousand dollars to stand up the Raze Program, which connects the ecosystem downtown and, and the entrepreneur ecosystem with West Dayton specifically. Not East Dayton, West Dayton, because we know that that is a very neglected part of our city, but with very rich resources and folks that understand business, they just need to be supported a little bit. So, we're getting, we're getting to that. These connections are happening live, so many different resources that are in the community for small business. We're gonna continue to support that, and if you let me, in, in November, we're gonna strengthen that and make it even better, better enhancement.
And, and for the, for the candidates, the other candidates, if you were in that chair, you know, what would you do specifically to bring new business to West Dayton?
Thank you, Mr. Ford, for that question. I did tell you the other side of myself. I'm a minority business owner. I've been investing in businesses for thirteen years. I'm in a very unique position. I work for myself, I work how I want to work, and I work when I want to work. So, I'm in a very unique position. I have the time to be here and talk to you and serve the citizens. Three things I think businesses care about: taxes, regulations, profitability. So, if we go out to different communities, the first thing we're gonna ask is, is it conducive for my business? What's your taxes? What's your local income taxes? What regulatory policies do they have? Are they up to date? Are they out of date? And profitability. If you're a business person, and I'm in business, you gotta make money. If you're not making money, you can't pay your employees, you can't pay the overhead, you can't pay your mortgage. So, with that being said, if I was elected city commissioner, going out to businesses and talking to them and learning, and just listening, saying, hey, what do you think we can do better? I'm self-employed, I don't have an actual business of employees, so I would love to talk to business owners, and I talk to, I have relationships with business owners to, to this day. What, what can the city do to help be more conducive to your business? Are there any taxes or any type of ordinances that are outdated, or is there ordinances that we need that can help your business thrive? Technically, youth, as a city commissioner, if I'm elected, investing in youth, that is business. I'm thirty-four, but I'm looking at a kid maybe fourteen, that's the next Jordan Orville, the next day trader, investor, real estate person. So, investing in youth is investing in business, because eventually we're gonna give a torch to them. And if you have a business now, like I have a business now, I want my son to take it. My son's five, when I'm dead and gone, I want my son to operate my business. So, investing in youth is huge, and I appreciate that question, Mr. Ford, and I think that that's how I approach it if I'm elected Dayton City Commissioner.
Mrs., no, I'm sorry, Mr. Baner.
I think what we keep hearing tonight is this idea that development and job creation has to start downtown. And part of what my campaign is saying is we need to change the conversation and be far more intentional about the west side of Dayton. And so, what that meant for me is saying, the tax abatements and the, the tools that we use to usher in development downtown, we can do the same thing on the west side if we prioritize it. My campaign is actually supported by someone who grew up in the area. Her father was an engineer in the Oregon District, her name is Hannah Beekler. She is an award-winning movie filmmaker, she got an Oscar for the movie Black Panther. She's looking at returning to Dayton and investing millions in this community by being visionary, not by saying, let's keep rolling out the red carpet for big businesses that cut and run as, as soon as things get hard in this community. I grew up in Trotter, there's a mall missing, there's a Walmart missing, there's a Target missing, there are grocery stores missing. That is replicated in Dayton. We can't keep rolling out the red carpet for big developers who have no investment in this community aside from what we give them from the candy store, and then as soon as things get hard, they run. So, what I'm saying is let's be visionary, and let's be thoughtful, and let's be intentional. So, Hannah Beekler is, you know, someone who has millions to invest in this community is saying, let's build film industry on the west side. We have entire industries to replace. My dad was a factory worker, he now drives trucks five days a week. That's not what he planned to do for the rest of his life, you know, and, and his job was pulled from up underneath his feet. And we have entire, you know, manufacturing industry to replace. We have to be far more visionary than, you know, piecemealing it with this business and that business. We have to invite entire industry here, and Hannah Beekler is bringing millions to the west side of Dayton, buying a home on Sebenthaller, and saying, let's be visionary about our community. And that's my perspective.
Okay. So, how do we do startup businesses? How do we?
I think they want you to speak up.
Okay, how do we generate? How do we generate businesses? And they're talking about the west side of, of the, the city. Mr. Shaw, I've never seen you at a city commission, at a, at any neighborhood association meeting, any business association meeting. Since September, I've attended about ninety percent of the neighborhood meetings and the business meetings, and, and most of those are held during the day around, around noon time. I've never seen you promote anything like what you're talking about, and I've never seen any results of what you're talking about. We need to, we're, we're getting a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, the city is, and we're starting to give it out to, you know, special interests. A hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars grand went to a gentleman that wants to start a chicken place on North Main Street. Well, that's great, a hundred and seventy-eight, a hundred thousand dollars to one business. Okay, now, where's the equity and fairness for the rest of the businesses throughout not only west side, the east side, north side? Everybody should be included. There's a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars, you taxpayers that pay for this, you're the ones that should get the share. So, we need startup money for businesses, we need to rewrite, we change our, our zoning to accommodate, to cut this red tape, and, and, and then that will generate small business development. Thank you.
For my business, for what I do, a business I started in an old corner grocery store that was, I bought for twenty-two hundred dollars, it should have been torn down, is I own an ad agency. So, we work with small startups, mediums, small, medium-sized businesses, and we help them grow. They pay us for the services. This is what I do, I help businesses grow. And I'm gonna tell you something. Politicians who think their job is job creation are smoking something. That is not their job. It is not their job to be investors, to be picking winners and losers. Why did we give two million dollars for a hotel in the Arcade? We just built three other hotels downtown. There is no need for your tax dollars to go to subsidize a corporation from out of town to open a hotel. You talk about job creation on the west side, yet where did the job creation go under these guys? You been out at the airport lately? Do you see all that, those new warehouses? Right? Where are the people going? How are they getting there to those jobs? There's no easy bus route, there's no train. Now, the roads are clogged up there with cars and trucks going up to the airport, which wasn't meant for that. While we've got the old McCall Publishing site sitting there empty with a rail spur and everything else, they don't care about jobs on the west side that you can get to. If you want to see people rise out of poverty, I talked about some of these things thirty years ago. One is, we need round-the-clock affordable childcare, because that's the leading problem of people getting to jobs and getting to work, young people, and get them out of poverty. There are cities that have done, done free public transit. and I want Dayton to be one of them, to help bring people out of poverty and get them to those jobs.
Thank you. I'm going to try to combine several questions, because they go to the division on the city commission. And one question asks this question, what steps are you taking now to set up a compromised city budget to avoid the unrest we had at the end of last year's cycle? And the other one is, I was perplexed to, to a recent resolution to pay a mediator to work out the differences between the commissioners. Isn't it the prerogative for the commissioners to vote the way they believe their constituents desire? And so I think if I combine those two, I'm asking the candidates and the current commissioners, how would you avoid the stalemate we have in December? And how would we go forward without asking for an outside? I don't know how much was paid for this consultant, but how do we go forward as a unified commission without paying more taxpayers' dollars for an outside consultant to do something that we, that you as elected officials should be, as elected officials should be able to do? And let's start with Mr. Shaw and go this way now and come back, okay? Thank you.
Okay, great. Thanks for that, for that question. Yeah, frankly, I don't believe we have to agree on everything. I mean, I think we've all been elected to vote the way that we feel is right. And that's what I intend to continue doing. Yeah, there has been a lot of angst and anxiety and just issues upon the dais, and it was different than anything I've ever experienced prior to now. But the fact of the matter is, we all care about this city. We want to make things better. Hard choices that we have to make. Money doesn't grow on a tree out in front of city hall, so we have to make very difficult choices. But at the end of the day, I think we're on a good path here. And I don't think that there is a huge problem if we disagree sometimes. Oftentimes, it's the way that we do it. Because these commission meetings are not town hall meetings. They are business meetings. And regular order would suggest that we conduct them in that way. But, you know, things are moving well, and we are going to be just fine in this next budget cycle. I think it is important that we kind of scale back on these emergency resolutions. I think it's important that we proceed effectively, and we're doing that work. So I will continue to vote my conscience, and I would encourage all my colleagues to do the same thing. And things will start to calm down and get a lot better. But these are all very passionate people. We agree on about 95% of the things, but again, it's just how do you do it? And we will work through that.
Mr. Worthing's next, then we start to begin.
Mr. Ruckus, thank you for putting that colorful question together, because I think people do care about that. I think that we all here are educated, we have common sense. I'm a police officer, and I go to a scene, I see an anomaly. If I see something that doesn't make sense, it makes you look further into something. Two commissioners and a mayor, in the past several years, have agreed on everything. I know you know, three people with different experiences, backgrounds, religions. It's impossible for three people to agree on everything. So what does that lead you to believe? There's something behind the story I think any normal person would look into. So saying that, emergency orders are totally abused. Why are they abused? Again, let's investigate. It's a red flag. Why are they abused? I'm asking a rhetorical question. I think I can answer a rhetorical question. If I wait till the last minute to put something through, that lacks transparency. It lacks accountability. I don't think this is just Jordan's opinion. I think, you know, I've owned a business for 13 years, I've raised a son, it's just common sense. My mom and I were pretty smart people. So emergency orders are very abused. The $30,000 that we just spent, because you have certain commissioners that want to protect an establishment, and certain commissioners that don't care about the establishment, it's a waste of money. And what are you going to accomplish? Nothing, until we have a collaborative effort of all commissioners, being genuine and voting on their heart. What makes United States of America is freedom. You have the freedoms to believe what you believe. And that's what makes us unique and one of the best countries in this world.
Mr. Benning?
Thank you very much. So, you know, when you're asking, should we be paying, excuse me, tax dollars to get adults to get along? I think the answer is an unequivocal no. When we need to pay, you know, to the tune of $30,000 or $40,000 to foster basic working relationships with people who have been duly elected, I think it speaks to the people who have the power on the dais. And when you have your three votes, to your point, there's no need to agree on everything, because you have the agreement that you need. And that's what we saw in the budget fight. They had the agreement, you know, and it was a foregone conclusion. So to talk to the other commissioners was a busy work. We can't have that when they have been duly elected and very vigorous election. And so we need to get to a place where we are having conversations on every issue, not just because you have a monopoly on power, or like a recent vote, you recused yourself, and then when things got a little dicey, you were going to come out of recusement to make sure, you know, you got what you wanted out of the commission. That's not fair, that's not transparent, that's not where we need to be. And it doesn't do a service to this community. Furthermore, in a country where we see rampant violence and gun violence and abuse, the idea that we can turn on our committee, city commission meeting, and see a duly elected member of the commission being screamed at, shut down, silenced in the face of police chiefs or whoever else wants to speak to what the three, you know, with the voting power want to hear or want to pass, that triples down to the neighborhood. And so, you know, I have a sister, I have a mother, my sons are young. I don't want them learning that it's okay in the halls of power to scream at a woman you don't agree with. And I think we are way beyond the pale when it comes to basic respect on our city commission.
Okay. Well, the people that are suffering because these three have monopoly, the mayor and Chris Shaw and Matt Joseph, are the people. The people are the ones that are suffering. We have church groups that are going before the city commission, pleading with the city commissioners to change their policies, their policies towards the torn-down Good Sam. They want to see a health facility there. It falls on, they've gone, this group has gone before the city commission, week after week after week, pleading with these city commissioners to help them get a health facility over there where Good Sam used to be. It falls on deaf ears. So when you have a monopoly of power, that's what happens. And not only are the other two commissioners shut down, the neighborhoods, the businesses, the whole rest of the citizens in Dayton are shut down. So that's where these guys are coming from. And Chris Shaw just said, well, hey, you know, it's working now. I haven't intended to change my tune or anything else, you know? We have the monopoly of power, so, too bad. Too bad for the citizens of Dayton. So if you let me, I would be the third vote with Darryl Fairchild and Shanice Turner-Sloss. I would be the third one. So then what would happen? Okay, what would happen then? I would actually work with Chris Shaw, Matt Joseph, and Jeff Mims. And, or one of them has, well, wait.
Yeah, one of them has to go.
Yeah, one of them has to go. Minus one, City Commissioner Jeff Mims. I would work with the other two commissioners, Darryl Fairchild and Shanice Turner-Sloss. And we would, then you have to have a compromise, right? There would have to be a compromise on what for the people.
Thank you.
Now, you're not going to believe this story, but there was a time in my neighborhood that we were deeply divided. We had people paying for memberships in my neighborhood organization to have them come and vote. $5 was the membership fee back then. And we had something like 200 votes this election, and it was a division. And things went really bad. And so I ran for neighborhood president. And what I did was institute policies and agenda with time limits and make sure people got heard, make sure everything was clear. And these meetings stopped being three hours long. We came together, and after two years, I said, okay, I've got this guy picked to be my replacement. He's going to take over, and things smoothed out. I also ran a veterans business group for seven years. We did a lot of things, and there was a lot of division there, and we brought everybody together, and it worked well. But let's talk about the real elephant in the living room right here. Shelley Dixtein should have been fired on the spot for bringing a budget as an emergency ordinance. Shelley Dixtein should still be held liable for the hole on Mudlow, that big gaping spot, where she paid all this money to student suites to come here, your tax dollars, $2 million, made a hole in the ground, gave the crown piece of the building to the guy who tore everything down, including the part he wasn't supposed to. Shelley Dixtein, who spent $5 million to bring a Kroger without a contract. Why is this woman still running? And I'll tell you why. Because power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts absolutely. These three men, and I have a lot of respect for Mr. Mims, for Mayor Mims. I don't have a whole lot of respect for these two guys. I think they're really nice guys, but I don't think they have a clue. We had a culture of corruption investigation by the FBI. It's not done, and you will find out eventually what really happened.
Just so you know. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So my old colleague, Mayor McLean, used to say, the key to commission doing business the right way was to disagree without being disagreeable. And those are words that have stuck with me the whole time, just like a lot of other things she said. But this one particularly, it's in my head, you know? So Commissioner Fairchild asked us to do mediation. You know, I can't say mediation is my favorite thing in the world. I can't imagine not many people do, think it's great, but I think we were willing to try it. If you wanted to try it, we said okay. So we're trying. But really, the key is to make sure that we disagree and we find good ways to disagree. Part of that is making sure the process, leading up the legislation, notification of what's going on, make sure that's accessible to everybody, make sure it's agreeable to everybody, that everybody's comfortable with when they know about these legislation or proposed legislation. When they know the schedule for budget hearings, how many there are, that sort of thing. So if you have a good process leading up something that everybody, all five of us agree on ahead of time, that smoothes things out in the back end, it really does. So I have good hope, like Commissioner Shaw said, that we're on the way to getting things running more smoothly, living up to Mayor McLean's suggestion that we need to learn how to disagree without being disagreeable. And like Commissioner said, we all know the best for the city, we do. We have slightly different ways of looking at it, but I think we're making strides, and I certainly have been able to work to get there.
Thank you. There is a question from one of our members that's specifically for Mr. Israti, but we're not going to do that, because we want to make certain that the questions that we ask here, everybody has an opportunity to answer those particular questions. So we're not singling out anyone, so that's to our members. We're not going to do that.
So just further, Mr. President, if I may. So if you gave me a question for a specific candidate, that question will not be asked either. So what the president's saying, if there is a specific question for a specific individual, we will not ask it. If you can make it generic to everybody, then we'll put it into the mix, okay? Go ahead, Mr. President.
All right. So the next question that I have is from one of our members, another one from one of our members. And then my next question after Chairman Roberts is that I'm going to go to education from there. But this question specifically says, what is the general plan for permanent, part-time city employees to become full-time? What is the general plan for permanent, part-time city employee to become full-time? And maybe if you all can, well, I guess you want to start with Jordan, and I'll go around.
Thank you for that question, whoever asked it. What is the plan to make part-time employees permanent? Honestly, I'm not incumbent, I don't have access to that information, and I don't know. I'd like to highlight one, kind of like the City Commissioner just mentioned, that mediation, he doesn't really like, doesn't really feel comfortable with it. Well, guess what? When you're a elected official in America and you're a public servant, every day is a 360 approach to every problem. To sit and say, I'm not comfortable with mediation, I'll do it if I have to. I think we all know, if you elect a public servant, they're not going to know all the answers. But what they're going to do is just give and take. They're going to say their point of view, they're going to listen to your point of view. There may be a holistic 360 point of view that's totally contradictory and opposing, but that's what makes America, America. We don't want one lame candidate, one issue candidate just on this issue, and then this candidate's on this issue and that issue. We want to elect a five-city commission to bring Mr. Worthing's experience, to bring Mr. Israti's experience, Ms. Duncan or Mr. Benning. We want them to all come, their own experiences, their own lifestyles, their own religions, whatever, background. We want them to come together and work together and say, hey, I may disagree with such and such, but how can we bridge the gap? Where can we agree to disagree? And how can we move the needle forward? You can always go forward, right? Taking different stuff.
Mr. Benning?
Much like Mr. Worthing, I don't know a specific plan to take part-time employees to full-time. What I do know is that our city jobs, everyone has to be competitive. Right now, if you work in the city, you probably work for the city or the county. We need to make our jobs competitive to where you don't have to go out work and be recruited, to where you don't have to go out to the suburbs to actually make a living. And so, you know, when we're talking about wages and incomes, we need to figure out how to make city jobs more competitive with the rest of the region, because it's not, frankly, we're talking about jobs that are permanently part-time. How does that put food on the table or, you know, pay your bills? That's not a real-world proposition for 2023. And so I think a lot of these ideas are just really antiquated, and nobody has made it a priority to say, you know, a permanent part-time position is not something that puts food on anybody's table. So how do we fix this? And so if I'm on the city commission, that's certainly a priority for me. I understand what it means to work a regular job. I'm a retail manager now as we speak. I am not a business owner, I am not an engineer. I make an everyday honest guy living, and we need to support that in this city. And that includes our city staff and workforce. So that's how I.
Okay. A lot of this has to do with negotiating a contract. The city of Dayton, the city manager's office gets together with representatives from the union, and they put together a three-year contract. Now, because of COVID and because of lack of getting revenue to the city of Dayton, because people are staying home and working out of their homes, so then the city cannot collect. When they go out to Beaver Creek or they live in, they go work out in Trotway, they can't collect that income tax money, because they're not going to those particular jobs. The city has always dealt with this part-time, permanent, full-time for the longest time. I worked for the city for 31 years. Contracts are negotiated every three years. There should be a path that is agreeable with the ASME union and the management to get people from part-time, permanent to full-time permanent. The reason why they're on part-time, permanent, they don't have, they don't get all the benefits as a full-time permanent. And so the city pays money that way. But at the same time, that's to the disadvantage, actually, to the city, because then you're going to have all these. But at the same time, uh, that's to the disadvantage actually to to the city because then you have gonna have all these part-time permanents. You know, they only can work up to maybe thirty, thirty-five hours at the most. Uh, and then you're gonna actually have more people working than if you had a permanent staff. So I would, as a city commissioner, work with the the ASME union to create a pathway for these part-time permanents to go to full-time permanent.
So here's a little surprise for you. The city commission is like a board of directors. They are not the operations people that run the city. That is done by the city manager. That's what a city manager, form of government, does. We are supposed to provide policy and direction. We are not supposed to get into the nitty-gritty of individual hiring. I will tell you, there have been stupid things about our hiring process practices in the city of Dayton for a long time. One of them is that we refuse to recognize police officers with thirty years' experience from other departments, especially when they're a black male, and tell them they can't carry a gun because they didn't go through the Dayton Police Academy and keep their notebooks straight. Stuff like this is petty, petty, petty. The reality is, if you work for the city, we're work, we hired you because we believe in you. And you should have an opportunity to rise up through the ranks and become a leader. Now, you wanna hear a real horror story in this city? And I know I'm not running for school board, but we have an exceptional Daytonian who has set records and track, who has gone on to get his PhD, has excelled in everything he's done in this city. He's worked in the schools for twenty-plus years. And the school board says, no, we're we're gonna rehire the person we never even interviewed and did a background check on. We're not gonna open up, they do this sort of thing. Our hiring practices say we don't believe in the people that we have in our operations. This guy's worked in Dayton Public Schools for thirty, oh, close to thirty years, and they passed him over. For a woman who's been here from six years and has a horrible track record. We've got a problem in Dayton that we don't grow our own. And the real indication of a leader is that they prepared the people underneath them to step up into those jobs when those jobs become available. We don't do a very good job of that here.
Uh, so, uh, part-time permanents, we probably had the most that we've had in a while, about, uh, twelve or fifteen years ago after the Great Recession. Um, since then, the number of part-time permanents has gone down. Um, and, uh, some of the previous speakers here mentioned that the the number of part-time permanents and the path to move up is a a a function of the the agreements that we make with labor. So, uh, management sits down with with our labor unions, uh, and negotiates a contract like Ms. Duncan said. And, uh, one of the instructions that we generally give, and we're allowed to give advice, we don't, as Mr. Israti says, we don't get into the weeds of it. But some advice that we give is to reduce the number of part-time permanents so people have, uh, proper pay and proper benefits. So over these years, the number has been reduced and I expect that to continue. Um, and something else that I wanna address in a related topic is succession planning. We went, uh, when I was first elected, we had almost two thousand people employed in our general fund. And as of right now, we're eleven hundred, eleven hundred and fifty people. Uh, so it becomes really important to make sure that people are trained well, make sure that we're identifying people, uh, so they're exposed to different things in the organization. So we have the next leaders ready to move up. And that's something that we've emphasized by necessity, uh, and because we need good leaders in the city and city administration. So we're working on that too. And I think that if we're talking about moving part-time permanents to regular positions, uh, that sort of falls through. Uh, we wanna be consistent and make sure that we're looking for talented folks ready to move up to leadership too. So we need to make that a a consistent line. Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. A very, very good, um, good question. So I agree with with that, Commissioner. Um, you know, the way that the market is now, we're we're in such desperate need for employees that, you know, part-time and that's a good funnel for us to to get them into these positions. I will tell you something that, uh, we did since I've been on the commission, and that's the Homegrown Heroes Program. Where if you work for the organization, part-time or whatever, especially with police, you can move to the front of the line in terms of the, um, the police test and to get on the police force. So that was a really good program and it actually helps with the diversity in the police department. Because some folks that would have traditionally been left out or, um, canceled out for whatever reason, uh, are not able to, again, go to the front of lines. I'm very proud of that work. Um, you know, we, uh, the commissioner was right, the city manager does negotiate contracts and that's the way it should be. We we can have some input and we tell them that we're prioritizing taking care of our people. And that's why, uh, Commissioner Joseph and I were both endorsed by the ASME Labor Union, as well as most of the other, uh, labor unions in this in this region. Uh, because of our commitment to the to the union, united labor and and our workers, uh, in the city. And that's why frankly, uh, there was a lot of anxiety and anger to a certain degree when we were talking about the budget. Because we were committed to supporting our workers who put their skills and lives on the line to do a good job for our citizens each and every day. So we stand up for them, we're gonna continue to do that, and I just look for your support on November seventh and and May second.
So it's about seven twenty-one. We're gonna go to a little bit before eight. Uh, and I'll give it back over to President Bullock to ask the education, or question he has regarding education and our youth.
Okay, so this is gonna be, uh, kind of, kind of a loaded question. And it's gonna, you know, NAACP has six, six major pillars that we deal with, uh, which is economic sustainability, which we've already kind of talked about that a lot here today. Uh, education, public safety and criminal justice, voting rights and political representation, uh, youth and young adult engagement and health. So those are six major pillars. So we're gonna want, so we're gonna combine education and youth and young adult engagement together in this next loaded question. And and then we wanna make sure that we get public safety. We started about fifteen minutes late, so if you can indulge us to go into about eight fifteen, that 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 would really be appreciated. And we're gonna go down to one-minute answers to, you know, on these questions, after this particular question for, since we're gonna combine education and youth and young adult programs. So, uh, it says, what can be done regarding, uh, the DPS school, school system poor academic rep- reputation? Uh, so that's part of the question. What can be done regarding DPS poor academic reputation? Uh, combine that with, uh, what would you do to support extra fair funding and resources for DPS and youth programs in the community? And cap it off with, uh, what happened to the one million dollars that the Dayton City Commission passed last fall for youth programs? So that's kind of all combined into one, one package.
We'll give you thirty candidates, we'll give you thirty seconds, think about it. I gotta talk to the president of course.
Uh, Mr. Benning turns on you.
So as I mentioned, I have a four-year-old who will be five tomorrow, actually, um, and a three-year-old, um, I have two sons. And they will be entering DPS schools. I live right behind Roosevelt Elementary, um, which I've heard is doing pretty well, so we're sending them there. Um, but, you know, just last week, we, our commission was voting on the the deal to, you know, complete the second phase of the arcade. And passes prologue, the vote came down to once again whether they were gonna get a one hundred percent tax abatement or a seventy-five percent tax abatement before anything is even started. Um, and so what that means is before, I mean, when the deals are signed, our children are having the rug pulled from up underneath them. Sixty percent of every property tax dollar goes to Dayton Public Schools. I mean, and the rest goes to libraries, parks, so on and so forth. If we are cutting, you know, all of these deals without, you know, cutting property taxes out of all of these deals, our kids are being shut off right at the start. And so what it becomes about is getting the money back to them, whether it's through the income tax or whether it's through this deal or that deal or whatever. The mechanism is in place to fund our schools. Let's use it. Let's stop saying, oh, you wanna build here, Dayton is a great place, oh, but you need a one hundred percent tax abatement to come. What does that mean? Do you really wanna be here or do you not? Um, and so when it comes to educating our children, this is a real critical issue. Um, do we want three hotels downtown more than we want an educated student body in Dayton Public Schools? And I think the answer is very clear. Um, and so the mechanism is in place. We need to use it, we need to stop trying to cut people out of the deal, make backroom deals with developers and whoever else, um, you know, to make sure they come with the red carpet rolled out while our students are struggling for resources. Uh, particularly throughout the pandemic, we saw, um, what that disparity meant and how it was exacerbated by the lack of resources. Um, so it's time out for saying the only way to come to Dayton is to cheat our children.
Well, just to piggyback on, um, what the market was saying, okay, okay, supporting three hotels with tax abatement. Well, the thing is, uh, why would somebody go to a hotel down in Dayton? I mean, if the convention center is not functioning like it can't, it can't, it should, then you're not gonna have that job. You're not gonna have the conventioneers coming down to Dayton to begin with. The convention center is too small. It's, uh, the capacity is 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 not up to where it should be. Um, that's why the big conventions, the large conventions, they go to Cleveland, they go to Columbus, they go, they go to Cincinnati. Okay? So you you've got all this tax abatement and then you have like now three hotels to support. You know, where are the people, where are the people that are gonna be going into those hotels? Now, to get back to the question, um, the DPSU and, um, the city of Dayton, uh, commission can work together. They they should be working together to help our young people. Uh, what there's a problem is, is, um, uh, the, our young people are are not, um, going to school like, like we expected. You know, and, uh, there's also a lack of interest in the students. But there's, it seems like they have no incentive to actually go to school, you know, show up to school and 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 do their homework and and succeed. Uh, so we need to, we need to change all that and we need to have a comprehensive plan to help our young people.
You know, it's funny. Been talking about this for thirty years and it hasn't gotten a lot better. The school district's gotten a lot smaller, we've seen charter schools. We still haven't addressed the real problems we have with education in Dayton. One is our community is suffering from poverty. It's hard to study when you're hungry, you don't know where you're gonna sleep, you don't know where you're gonna, the next meal's coming from. It's hard when you don't have healthcare. And there have been all kinds of initiatives left and right, and we're not gonna solve it overnight unless we work to end poverty in this community. That means we don't spend millions of dollars tearing down houses when we in fact need to make sure the houses those kids live in have running water, have sanitation, have a roof over their heads. And for the kids that don't have places to live, we need, and I've said this, there's a video I put out a long time ago called There Ain't No F in Dayton. And you probably should go look at that on YouTube. And it's an entire proposal, including year-round schools. Because when you are behind, we can't afford the summer slide. We need to go to year-round schools also because we're not an agrarian society. We don't need the kids out there harvesting in the summertime. The teachers' union says, oh, we work a hundred and eighty days and then we gotta work at night. No, you don't have to work at night. What you need is a school year that's structured where about half the day is instruction and half the day is in things that get kids interested in school. Be it band, music, be it sports, be it computers. We need internet access, high-speed internet access in lots of parts of the city that's affordable. And all the kids need to be able to take a computer home. I worked on the Dayton Public Schools Technology Steering Committee. I got outvoted when I said those kids should be given those Chromebooks and they should take them home. Oh, we can't trust them with a Chromebook? Yes, you can. It's called accountability, it's called responsibility. These are life skills that kids need to learn. But the problem at Dayton Public Schools is that we have horrible leadership and a horrible school board that isn't doing its job. And we need three of you to decide to run for the school board this fall. Which one of you is gonna do it? Because I can't run for both, okay? If you haven't been to my blog, israti.com, it's been going since two thousand and five. You can find lots of this information. Thank you.
So it's a good question. Uh, what can we do to support DPS, make sure our students have good outcomes and succeed like we all want them to do? Um, the the biggest thing that we've done as a city is, uh, we passed issue nine. And every year we give between three and four million dollars to make sure that three and four-year-olds have quality preschool education. Uh, we help parents pay for it, we help train teachers, we help certify facilities, uh, make sure they know what they need to be a, a two, three, four-star facility. Um, and the results have 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 come out and it works. More of our kids are prepared for kindergarten than ever they ever have been before. Um, and I'm very proud that we've taken that step. It's unusual, we were only the second city in the country to do something like that. Um, so I'm really proud that we've done that. Um, I also will say that, uh, we need to do a better job of explaining what happens with tax abamments. Um, in these tax abamments that we're talking about, even though money is not there from taxes, uh, we asked the school board to sit down with companies so they either give cash or they pay back in other ways. From this hotel, for instance, they actually allow the training program for new employees from our schools.
No.
So the kids will have.
No.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
It's okay.
Let me, give me.
You're okay, sure. You want, okay. Uh, uh, so this hotel agreed that they would give some cash to the schools and then provide a training program for people to work with hotels and eventually hopefully rise the hotel management. And it's a national chain, international chain. Hopefully we're giving folks opportunities, uh, beyond what just cash provides. So, uh, there there's more than just just, uh, tax money in hand here. There are other things that 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 companies can provide that, uh, we make sure that they sit down and deal with. But, uh, I I think that, uh, we do everything with our kids in mind, all of us are are focused on the future of the city, all of us here, all of my current commissioners. Uh, so we do have that in front of our mind at whatever decision we make.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, thank you.
You're okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you for that and thank you for the for the question. I'm not running for the school board, so I really don't have a dog in that fight. Um, but I am on the Turk Council, which is the body that, uh, monitors, uh, tax incentives. Um, county, uh, I'm a county auditor, chairs it, and members of the school, of every school system affected by a TIF, uh, sit at that table. So we're able to see the results of these incentives. Now, I'm a business owner. I I don't, I don't like that we're incentivizing development, except where it's leveraged to create other opportunities. And that's exactly what's happening with our tax incentive. Oftentimes, we get ten times the money that we spent on these tax incentives. Now, they are starting to disappear. We're not having to incent projects like we did when I first got elected. Now the market is driving a lot of it, and frankly, that's where we wanna be. But there are great benefits to a school system. So what would you rather have, a hundred percent of nothing or seventy percent of an opportunity, uh, into the future? And that's what's happening. And so I, you know, I'm very proud of the work that we've done in terms of of TIFs. But I want to see them decrease and let the market take over, uh, and drive it. So Universal Pre-K, we support our kids in that, the nationally recognized, uh, uh, as an all-American city for that work. Um, it's really quite remarkable that we led, uh, in that way. So our our kids, we're putting a lot of attention on them. Someone mentioned a, a million dollars in community block rec grant funding that we set aside for schools. And that was part of that whole budget kind of issue. We were gonna do that anyway, but you don't do that at the budget meeting and most of that stuff is worked out ahead of time. You go back in February and March and April and make those adjustments. And that's exactly what we're doing, putting a lot of money out there for Revon Parks. This is very important to us. The mayor held a youth summit. We were very engaged with with, uh, with our youth. I talked to you about the apprenticeship programs that I stood up with the AFL-CIO and the building trades. We're making inroads. Gotta get these kids connected to job opportunities and a lifeguard job at fifteen dollars an hour for a sixteen-year-old goes a long way.
Mr. Wertham?
Yes, and I'll repeat, I'm not running for school board and I'm not educated. Uh, in my experience, I went to Chamae Julian, which is a Catholic high school in University of Cincinnati. Um, that being said, I think that we can all agree. That being said, I think that we can all agree on certain things. Transportation is key. Candidates mentioned transportation. It's, it's hard enough to go to a classroom setting and be put in an umbrella. And it's hard to get to, to, to school. As a police officer, I dealt with kids, I personally took kids to schools because they didn't have transportation. Secondly, a lot of kids are hungry. They're not being fed. So we're going to school to eat one, one meal a day. And then when we're coming home, they're not being fed. So this is a multi-fold question to answer. I don't think any of us has the silver bullet to this problem of, uh, the reputation of Dayton Public Schools. However, Mr., uh, Mr. Ryan did made a great point about, uh, Mr. Dr. Lawrence. I have, uh, I'm afforded to work out with him. I think he's a fantastic guy. I think the school board is very polarizing. And I think that three of you should run for, uh, for Dayton Board. Because I think that would make a huge difference. Uh, I watch the, uh, school board meetings and it's clear. It's just conflict of special interests, class, and, uh, lastly, mental health. I think with dealing with social media, Facebook, the bullying, I think there's something we can invest in with kids in terms of their mental health services. I think we should have more facilities where, um, a kid should either go to a program and not be labeled by, by his peers or his classmates. And so there's a lot of things I think can be tried. And, um, I appreciate that, that question, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad there's a lot of interest in the school board. We'll have a forum in that September, but they file in August. And we are deeply, as President Forward and I mentioned in our meeting yesterday, we are engaged in conversation right now with the Dayton School Board and Superintendent on our concerns of what's going on in Dayton schools. So, uh, keep an eye on that. Several questions dealing with, um, law enforcement, speeding, pedestrians feeling safe walking and riding their bikes. And I know Gettysburg has had, has had its bumps put in place. I know there are many communities and President Forward testified in Columbus recently about what they call it, where the cars.
Honing.
Honing. And so, uh, I, I'd like to just add that to this question. So the question has to do with, uh, law, traffic laws, dealing with speedy pedestrians feeling safe to ride their bikes and walk and, and honing, uh, which is messing up our streets, you know, with this drag racing and everything else. So let's start, uh, Mr. Wether, we haven't started with you yet, so we'll start with you and go this way, then, then this way.
And this is one minute.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Two minutes?
Sorry, Mr. President's rights, one minute.
One minute, okay.
One minute, team.
This doesn't happen in Oakland. It doesn't happen in Kettering. Why? They have no police officers on the street who actually write tickets. We stopped writing tickets a long time ago, except with a photo-enforced camera. People get to know these things and they go and do what they want. You see a lot of filters over license plates. You see all kinds of ways to get around this. Putting bumps and humps out in the streets is a really pathetic fix. Makes it really hard to pile the streets in the winter. It's not a good solution. This city hasn't gotten any smaller geographically, but our police department's gone from five hundred to three hundred and thirty. There's a reason we're having these problems and it's not something you're gonna solve unless you start writing tickets, you start making the expectations that people are abiding by traffic laws. And then things start to change. It's that simple. It doesn't happen in Kettering. It doesn't happen in Oakland. Thank you.
Mr. Justin?
Yeah, this is a tough problem. Uh, we've seen, uh, we've seen highs and lows. It's gotten worse, it's gotten better, it's gotten worse. Um, one thing that we can do in the city, that we know we can do, is design to make things safer for pedestrians, designed to make it, to encourage people not to speed. Uh, you see on West Third Street, the road narrowing that happened a couple of years ago, um, it slowed down traffic. Um, now we have a big track there. Um, and other, other streets in the city have done the same thing. In fact, uh, our Wayne Avenue Business Association folks are asking to have Wayne Avenue, they call it putting on a road diet, to shrink the road, uh, slow down traffic, to make it safer for pedestrians and folks with bikes. So while there has to be enforcement, um, and there are options, maybe to use technology better in those ways, I think the design of the roads and how we, how we set things up has just as much to do with that. So I'd encourage more of that.
It's, it's, uh, it's funny. I got asked that question today at a Salem Avenue Business Association meeting, uh, earlier this afternoon. And, uh, you know, my response was, no, we, we take the steps that we can. So speed bumps, that's not the solution. But it's a bridge to the solution. When we can attract, uh, money, again, uh, doing the work with my Infrastructure Committee will bring back money here to do just that, street calming, uh, trying to make the streets safer. But it's a long-term fix. Road diets, they help, putting in roundabouts and things like that, very expensive. But we're looking at ways that we can get some of those things funded. Uh, I'll disagree with you. There is going to be everything. Oakland, Kettering, everywhere. And across this country is happening, uh, also. So we gotta push back on it because it's very dangerous, it's very costly, it is tearing up the streets. And we're working to do everything we can do. We're being very responsive to the neighbors because they call us and they say, I want a speed bump. And before someone gets killed, I want you to put a speed bump here, even if you can't do the total for home, start there. So that's what we're doing.
Yes, thank you for that question. I'm the only former Dayton police officer here in this whole room. What you heard is not the answer. Okay, I could go, it's a great detail. Back in the sixties and seventies, you had rapport with the citizenry. They knew the officer that worked at the, you know why? Because that, that officer was the next-door neighbor. They had skin in the game. You talk to a Dayton police officer now, they'll say, they're not gonna back us. They don't understand, they focus on all the wrong crap, but they use more artful language. So if you don't have trust and you don't have love between the police and the citizens, you can waste your time talking about speed bumps, speed tickets, no license, da, 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 da. And we can just sit here and go down and pivot all these. That's not the real issue. The real issue is community relations. People gotta trust the police. The, the people have the power. The police don't have the power. If I'm a citizen, I'm giving you that power. If I don't trust you, I'm gonna take that power away. So you're not gonna stop me. You're not gonna give me the ticket. Because we as a community, run this community. And we're not running it the right way for the purpose of this to matter.
Thank you.
I can piggyback off of what Mr. Wether said. Yeah, there is no transparency. There's no conversation, there's no relationship between our community and our police. I recently spoke at a commission meeting where they were trying to expand police's capabilities to tap into cameras downtown. Uh, but they were doing it without exploring the impact on the community, um, without, and without being transparent about how they intended to use it. Uh, and so when you are talking about a relationship between authority and the community that they are charged to serve, there needs to be transparency and there needs to be honesty. And we don't get that from our police. So it is no surprise to me that people flagrantly break the law in our community. There's no respect there to Jordan Wether's point. Uh, what we need is a police department that is far more intentional about speaking to the community they represent and hearing their concerns and representing that in a real way. And not this top-down approach that says, if you give us more money and more resources, we will police the hell out of you. Uh, that doesn't work. We've seen it. We still have a problem with honing, um, despite, you know, going and trying to increase penalties at the state level. They don't care. What we need is a, a relationship where they actually respect authority.
Thank you, Mr. Wether.
Well, I think a couple of our candidates did touch right on what, what the problem is. Our, our police department needs to have more community engagement with their citizens. I mean, they, they, they do show up at the meetings occasionally and, uh, neighborhood meetings. And they do give a, a police report, you know, uh, robberies, break-ins, assaults and all that type of stuff. Uh, but there needs to be set up a program, um, that the, the, the police are engaging with, with the neighborhood. I mean, they're, they're talking about being, uh, having a police on a beat, okay? But they, they haven't quite implemented it yet. And that's what we need, is so that we do know who our, our police officers are in the neighborhoods. And then we can communicate directly to them. Uh, right now, the structure is.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. President, you have the next question? Oh, then we start?
We'll start with you. Oh, okay. All right, uh, okay. So this next question is, uh, so, so we've talked about economic sustainability, education, youth and young adult engagement, public safety and criminal justice. So, uh, we got one more question for public and safety, public safety and criminal justice. We're gonna end with voting rights and political representation, uh, with Senator Roberts. We're gonna, if we come up with something for help, it's gonna be about thirty seconds. But this next question is, we have lost a lot of police officers due to the amount of, uh, due to pay. Is there discussion to raise officers' pay, uh, at City Hall? By the way, is there discussion to raise officers' pay? So, so who do we start with?
Mr. Wether.
You just started with me last time. Should I always start with you?
Thank you. It's a good question. Simple answer is yes, yeah, there's talk. Uh, this year is the opening negotiation, just Duncan mentioned. That's how things get done with our labor unions. Uh, the administration talks about it every month. They come to a deal with inflation, with the fact that we need to make sure we're retaining officers. There's absolutely a conversation about our recent pay. So we'll see later this year.
Yes, that's right. We are having conversations about, about that. And that's part of the labor negotiations with the, uh, with the FOP. So let's, let's, uh, maybe deal with that. I am very proud of the work that we did with Police Reform, where we met for eighteen months, about a hundred community members and police to engage and to try to figure out how we can make things better between the community and the police. We received national recognition for that as well. Uh, so I am, I'm very proud of that work and we should continue it. It's not perfect. It's wasn't meant to be perfect from the start. It's that we keep tweaking it and making it better as we go along. And we're gonna continue to do that work. Our police are leaving and it is, uh, largely due to pay because, uh, our training is so good that other police departments, you know, they, they suck those guys up. They want them to come out there because they're so highly, so very highly trained. We have to just make opportunities. And I think if we continue to engage with the police department, let them know that they are respected, that they, we care about them. But I think that will have an effect on, uh, on making them want to stick around.
Mr. Wether, thank you.
Okay, the city commissioners are completely wrong. You talk to a Dayton police officer, they're making about thirty-eight dollars an hour. That's pretty good pay. And if I'm a police officer, I'm not policing for profit. I'm not policing just because I wanna make a bunch of money. We make more money than Senator Police Department. We make more money than, uh, Harrison. We make more money. Dayton Police Department is one of the top-paying jobs in the state of Ohio. Good insurance. What we care about as officers is being treated with respect, being appreciated by the community, being appreciated by our command staff and our commissioners. If you don't wanna show appreciation for me, bye. I can go work somewhere else. I can go work with Kettering and be called Ohio's finest. And Dayton, look at my city commissioners, look at my mayor, dog and pony. They talk nice. They got the nice suits. Mayor got the nice suits. What would he say?
Thank you.
Well, um, I, I just think, you know, yes, we should be paying people a livable wage. But I think the, the more holistic conversation we should be having is away from police and to firefighters. Because as I canvassed and talked to firefighters, they are underpaid and they are leaving Dayton. Understaffed. You have an entire fire station closed with houses burning down, with unhoused people in them, seniors in them. That is an issue. So as long as we continue to talk about police, we are going to ignore the fuller conversation about public safety in that we don't deserve to be burning up in our homes either. Uh, so let's have a real conversation about public safety and pay the people who keep us safe in our homes, not the ones who keep us safe on the street. And that's our firefighters. Thank you.
Okay, God, there's a lot of, all sorts of issues in, in this one thing. Okay, it, yes, the contracts with the police department are negotiated with the FOP. Can we increase their, their wages? That's gonna be negotiated, uh, through the, uh, through the city, uh, city manager's office. We have a good, uh, police academy. Like Mr. Shaw said, we train our police, train them to be police. And then they go off to some other places, you know, Kettering, Oakland, Harrison Township or whatever. So we need to give the incentive of those, uh, cadets to stay here in Dayton. And then, um, and then they'll, they'll be, we'll have more police officers. Because right now they, they are leaving to other places.
I'm gonna say some things that the police union's not gonna like. Number one, if that police academy can't be run year-round as a for-profit center training police officers for people in the entire region, we can shut it down and we can just have our police go to somewhere else. Now, if you say we need specialized training and for, you know, the departments, we need to open it up everywhere and it should make us money. Number two, lateral transfers. We're just hiring our first people that have qualified in other departments. This is long overdue. But I wanna tell you about what I have a real problem with. There are institutions in this community that don't pay taxes. And yet they can afford to have their own private police forces. Do you remember Samuel DeBeau's who got shot by a University of Cincinnati police officer? He didn't report to anybody in government. He reported to college president. We have the same thing at UD, we have the same thing at Sinclair, we have Metro Parks, we have Miami Valley Hospital and Kettering Hospital. They all have their own police departments. I'm sorry, where do rich people get to have their own police departments with no oversight by the public? We need to have them pay for those officers and they should be Dayton officers. And we should increase the size of our department. Thank you.
Thank you. I know that most of the city commission really has little or nothing to do with voting rights or voter suppression and redistricting. But often the city commissioners and the mayors across the state show up in the Capitol and show up in Washington and express the citizens' views on redistricting, reapportionment, uh, and as we are debating right now, joint resolutions to lower the, uh, the vote, uh, from fifty-plus-one to sixty percent on citizens' initiative. So the question would be, this one-minute question, right? The one of Mr. Qu, the question starting with this, Mr. Benninger, come this way is, where would you stand on those issues and how would you represent the interests of the people of the City of Dayton, Washington or in Columbus on those kinds of issues? Okay? It's an open-ended question of voter suppression and voters' rights.
Yes, I think, um, if we're talking about the federal level, I'm certainly advocating for the John Lewis Voting Rights Act. I think that, um, is a huge step in the right direction. But what we can do practically, so when I was in college, and this is where I really got my start in terms of being engaged in politics, I was the guy walking around with voter registration forms. You did not find me, um, without my backpack full of voter registration forms. And we made a plan to pick it up, to mail it off or go turn it in. We made a plan to early vote or vote on primary day, election day, whatever the case may be. It's time out for our commission and our mayor showing up to events, wanting to dance and grab free food and not registering voters. Um, that's what we can do right here practically on the ground. Is register people who can be registered and make sure they are engaged before we go to the federal level and fight, you know, our Senate, which is the home of inaction, um, for federal legislation. So be about what you talk about. If you want people to vote for you, grow the electoral base. Make that real in what you do every day. And so that's how I would change that.
Thank you, Mr. Wether.
That's a more fantastic question, too. Yeah, we all need to get involved. I mean, when I went around with my petition, I, if people weren't registered to vote, I had a registration form and I got it into the board of, uh, elections. As a city commissioner, we need to encourage people to register to vote. And it starts in our schools, our elementary schools and our high schools. We need to bring back teaching kids about our constitution, our civil rights, the, the right to vote. I mean, this goes all the way back to this, uh, the Civil War. After the Civil War, uh, so the Anthony and Frederick Douglass concentrated on two amendments to end slavery, become citizen, and the right of African-American man to vote. And it, but that's where it started. But we have to progress it. We can't let it go stalemate. So we have to educate our, our young people again on their right to vote.
Thank you.
I have two nonprofits. I have a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(4). The 501(c)(4) is talking about creating Unigov in this region. It's called Reconstructing Dayton. Reconstructing Dayton. Five oh one C four is talking about creating Unigov in this region, it's called Reconstructing Dayton, reconstructingdaten.org. And there's one called the Modern Policy Institute, where, modernpolicy.org, where we're looking at ways to make voting mean things again. That means things like actually having real-time donor registration. You hear about voter registration, how about donors have to register and show where the money comes from? So you could find out who paid for Commissioner Sean, who paid for Commissioner Joseph when they go to vote on something. We need to restructure the entire process. And one of the things I think we really need is to take the power away from the two-party system because in Ohio, there are more people who are not a member of either party. Now, that doesn't matter in this election, it's a nonpartisan election. But if we bring in ranked choice voting, where you say, this is my first choice, my second choice, my third choice, we could skip this whole primary process and we could skip a lot of wasted money on a primary and we could actually lead the nation with a progressive system that works. Do you remember when there were like fourteen Democratic candidates running and by the time they got here, all we could vote for was Joe Biden? This is not a democracy. Ranked choice voting, one election, these are the things I wanna advocate for. Thank you.
Thanks, Senator, for that very good question. Uh, it is shameful what our state legislature's trying to do right now to make it harder for citizens to have their voices heard and to do it on something which, uh, just last year, they said, they decided we're gonna have any more August votes. And now they decided in this circumstance because they want, uh, they wanna make sure that their, uh, things they're afraid of don't get passed, now they're changing the rules. It's, it's terrible behavior, it's anti-democratic and I'm a hundred percent against the changes that they're talking about. Um, you're right, at the local level, there's not a lot that we can do directly, but we can, as I do, carry voter registration forms. We can advocate at the state and federal level for the changes that need to happen. Um, things that, that other states have done, have been successful doing are when you register your card, register to vote. Uh, they've expanded drop-off locations instead of restricted them for ballots. Uh, they have, uh, made sure that it's, it's easier to register instead of harder. We've seen in our history too many times when votes are restricted and everybody knows why, right? It's for money and for power and we need to fight against this latest wave. We will beat it, it's gonna take a while, we will beat it, but it is, uh, it's discouraging, we live in times when they're still trying to do this. So, I encourage everyone to fight it all out against this.
Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I carry voter registration cards with me when I'm out walking and, uh, constantly talk to folks about the importance of voting. Uh, it's, it's everything. But what I also do, I support my local NAACP because they are doing the work, uh, in this community and communities across our country. And thank you, Tom, what you're doing with the state, they're very important. So if you support the NAACP, you are, uh, you are supporting voter registration and we will make things a lot better.
Well, that's an excellent question. I'm gonna go back to the CJ McClain days. Mr. Israti knows he's been running for quite some time. Incumbents in the city of Dayton, they wanna hold their seat. I'm gonna ask you a question, can you think of an incumbent that has lost their seat in the city of Dayton without it being drawn, injected in terms of a criminal case? Um, somebody looking for opportunity to move up? Anytime there's an incumbent in that seat, they want low voter turnout. You know why? Because every day, they're buying votes, they're doing friends, they're doing favors for friends and family. Hey, I, I showed up for you, I need you to, I need you to show up for me. So the six, seventy percent that's gonna vote here, uh, Tuesday, about six thousand people, they like it, it helps them. I want seventy percent of people to vote, I want people to have more options. They want less and increases their odds of keeping that position. He's, they've been here for twenty, thirty years and they don't wanna lose the money in town.
Mr. President?
Okay, um, so you all have had an opportunity to hear five of our six pillars that each one of these candidates has had an opportunity to speak on. Stateability, education, youth and young adult empower, uh, youth and young adult empowerment, public safety, criminal justice, voting rights and political representation. So we have one more, uh, which is health. Do we have any health, do we have any healthcare professionals inside the room tonight? No. So, the question is, and this is a thirty-second question, we need a solid yes or no answer and then with your, uh, with the remaining solid yes or no, your, your, the rest of your twenty-nine or twenty-eight seconds, tell us what you're gonna do about it. Mental health is huge and it's, and it's problematic throughout our community. As you've seen, there was two ladies, uh, who put together on a mental, who put together a mental health forum, black men's mental health forum, here about a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, you know, one, her father, uh, it was a murder, committed suicide, he's young. And another lady, she was a victim of domestic violence. So, the question is, do you believe that there is a mental health issue in Dayton, Ohio with some citizens? And what are you gonna do about it? Right here.
So, there is absolutely a mental health crisis in Dayton and many other communities. Um, first what we need to do, to Mr. Israti's point, is address poverty. When you are hungry, when your home is dilapidated or you don't have one, um, when your schools are substandard, you have mental health problems. It was just on the news the other day, working conditions, poor working conditions creates poor mental health. Um, that is Dayton across the board. And so, we need to be serious about acknowledging the problem, we need to remove the stigma of mental health and then create access to the resources that are in place and then expand those resources. Thank you very much.
There's the time change. Okay, well, with all the stresses in, in our society, I think everybody probably has some degree of, of mental, mental health problems. Um, yes, our homeless, they say that eighty percent of the people that are homeless is because they had so many medical bills, so many bills, that they lost their house, they lost their car, now they're on the street. So we have to do, we do have to address the economic issues in order to get to the mental health issues. But it starts in the schools again, it starts in the schools. We, we have to address it in the schools and then work up.
Yes, we have a mental health problem, we also have one in Congress and in this country in general that we don't believe government can provide good healthcare. We need universal healthcare, everybody, period. Best way to create jobs is have healthcare, trust me, I own a small business. For the last seven and a half years, I've been honored to be the power of attorney, fiduciary and caregiver to a hundred percent disabled, mentally disabled veteran. I'm now also the POA for his mentally ill brother, who's been in jail for over a year and a half without ever seeing a courtroom and being found guilty. There are a lot of problems, there are solutions, but this country is not prepared for it yet. I hope to move that agenda forward. Mr. Joseph?
Uh, yes, mental health is a problem, it's increasing due to pandemic and due to a lot of factors that have been talked about by my colleagues here. Uh, what we're doing about it, uh, one thing is we just got federal money to put together a mental health response unit so that, uh, people that respond to scenes, uh, will have the training and will have the resources necessary to care for the folks with mental illness and to treat mental illness as an illness and not a crime. And I'm very proud of that, we need more of that.
Yes, there absolutely is a mental health crisis in this country, um, and of course, right here in Dayton. Um, uh, the mayor had a youth summit, there were four or five different, uh, breakout sessions that students could go attend. The line for mental health services was wrapped around the block. So, uh, yes, we have a, a critical need there. My, uh, police engagement committee came up with a mediation response unit and I'm very proud of that because it's important.
I'd say a two-pronged answer to this is, the people at the top, they need to stop representing themselves like they're perfect. I think every person in this room suffers from mental health to some degree. I have my own personal issues and guess what? Unlike the commissioners, I'm proud of my issues. I have anxiety, PT, I have all that, but I'm a man, I'm, I, every day it's a battle. Medication be expanded, that helps, resources, people should not have to pay two, three hundred dollars to go s, to go talk to a doctor for thirty minutes. There's a lot of things, but it, it starts at the top. We need to stop electing politicians who pretend to be perfect and act like, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Werth, thank you, candidates. Uh, I, I failed to say a thing about, uh, we are part of the Montgomery County Jail Coalition and one of the issues is mental health, reducing the population in county jail. We've been to the city hall, we've been to the county commissioners. So if you are elected and re-elected, we can count on the Montgomery County Jail Coalition coming to you to say, we don't need a big jail, we need a jail that meets the mental health and alcohol needs of our, of our inmates and our people in the county jail. So, I, I meant, should put that on the table because my colleagues would be upset with me if I didn't say that because we meet weekly to discuss this issue. I'm gonna start, uh, on the end again and give you thirty seconds to give us your, yourselves pitch on why you should be elected or re-elected to the Dayton City Commission. So, let's begin in thirty seconds.
Thank you again for the opportunity. I would just say that I am a fresh face, a new vision. Um, a lot of these people have been here for years and years and years and years. Um, and we need some new ideas for Dayton. I, like I said, when I walk out of my house, I see what a lot of Daytonians see, the abandoned home, the neglect. Um, it's important to me and it will always be a priority. When my, my kids are young, they're going to DPS, it's important to me, it will always be a priority. These are not things that I'm doing for favors, they're not things that I'm doing to be seen. A lot, most people in Dayton don't even know who I am, I'm here because I can.
Thank you.
Well, I hope you elect me, Valerie Duncan, I'm the only woman that is running. I hope I can bring some more, um, consistent callness to, uh, the rest of the, um, city commission. I don't really think we need thirty thousand dollars to, to do it, I think we just need some common sense. Um, also, I, I have thirty-one years of experience, I hope to bring that to, to help the citizens of Dayton and, um, I hope I have your vote.
Mr. Israti? I've been doing this a long time and obviously I should stop, right? No, I'm not gonna stop. Why am I not gonna stop? Because it shouldn't be as easy as it is for me to find stories to write about indignities in our city that are caused by our government. I want you to go to israti.com forward slash deadly to look at how our sheriff treated people in jail, where they were pepper spraying people in restraints. And he said it wasn't a de, a big deal. He's out promoted to the state house, we have a problem. I don't want any citizen to ever be treated like that. I don't want them wrung out of their cars by their hair when they're a paraplegic. I believe it's time to bring respect back to the people. Thank you. Mr. Joseph?
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, I've been proud of you, City Commissioner, I ask you to re-elect me again. I enjoy what I do, I enjoy listening to you, I enjoy, I try to make things better for the city, for us and for our kids. I love the fact that we're gonna be demolishing crappy houses in all kinds of neighborhoods coming up. We're supporting entrepreneurs and new businesses, uh, we're, 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 have, there's a lot underway right now that I wanna see through. There's a lot started, things are slowly getting better after tough times. We're gonna go through fits and starts, uh, you've seen a lot of that tonight, sort of aired out, but we're gonna get there. Things getting better and I really wanna be part of these, these new solutions as they come through. Thank you, I appreciate your vote.
Yes, I wanna thank you all for being here, I wanna ask you for your vote on next Tuesday and in November. I wanna continue the good work that I've been doing over these past several, almost eight years now. Uh, a lot of good things have happened, I wanna be here, uh, for when the benefits, uh, come out of it. One thing I learned, uh, by being on this commission, it takes time to do, uh, the development and make the changes. But we're starting to see it happen, it's not all gloom and doom, there's some really good positive messages and positive stories out there and good opportunities that, uh, we're gonna take advantage of. So I'm asking you for your vote.
Thank you.
Well, you should vote for me because you want change. I'm a former Dayton police officer, business person, I deeply care about it. These guys here, these commissioners, they have everything to lose, I have nothing to lose. If you don't vote for me, my day continues, I'm still gonna be a social justice warrior, I'm still gonna have my investments, I'm still gonna have my son. The city commissioners and the mayor, they come, they're tense, they're scared, they don't wanna lose this. If they lose this, it's an embarrassment. So I enjoy it, like Mr. Israti, make them nervous. Because I'm gonna get in and I'm gonna fight for what's right, not fight to get a second term, third term, fifth term, sixth term, seventh term. Let's move on, give the torch to the other guy.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, as you have heard, there is a clear difference in many of your candidates. And this is why we thought that was very important to bring this candidates forum to the city tonight. Because one week from today, you're gonna be making some very tough decisions. It's gonna be a field, we, we're now in the field of six, it's gonna be reduced to a field of four next Tuesday. After that field of four on Tuesday, now you're gonna have an opportunity to hear their stump speeches from May until November. And four will, and those four individuals, you're gonna have an opportunity to pick the top two individuals that will continue to lead Dayton forward. So, you have an opportunity to hear a difference. It's gonna be up to you to talk to your constituents, to talk to your family, to talk to your friends, to people who are not here tonight. And I, and my hope is that we do not have a low voter, voter turnout like we have a low voter participation here inside this room today. That's really the scary thing about midterm elections, is low voter turnout. People should understand that voting is critical to our democracy and voting is critical to any and everything that you want to do in your life and how you wanna carry the ball down the field with your children and your loved ones. So you're, you have some choices to make. And I, and I do want to say that we do have, the mayor is here, Mayor Jeffrey J. Mills is in the house today. And I'll yield to you to give you, uh, maybe just one minute, one minute, one minute to speak to us about why it's important to vote.
Four reasons.
No endorsement.
No endorsements. Four reasons you should vote. Vote for things that benefit you, your livelihood, your family and your community. Uh, for the last twelve years, I've been registering eighteen-year-olds to go vote for the first time in their lives. And again, most of them bringing their parents with them as well to go vote and they, uh, sometimes bringing cousins as well. But the, the aspect of voting is very critical to what we do as far as our nation is concerned. The issue is determined to how we make sure that government is served for the masses of people, not just for the people. We hear that a lot. When you look at the kinds of things that happen across the nation, you see people who are misusing those processes very well. You see a lot of people talking about things that have absolutely nothing to do with the political life of people.
He was on time. He's tapped it before you put it up. All right, so, so, uh, so first of all, uh, I wanna say thank you, Mr. Benninger. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for participating in our candidates forum this evening. And I wanna turn it over to, uh, our chairman of political action committee and then he closes out and he has, uh, a few things, wrap-ups and he closes out.
Again, uh, I've always said there's nothing such as off-year voting. For those school board members, for the city commission, voting is important, township trustees. Our next forum, we meet as a general membership the fourth Monday of every month. Our next political forum will be the fourth Monday in September. We'll have the candidates who come beyond the primary, we'll have township trustees, we'll have school board members. So it'll be a big turnout and I'm sure where it's gonna be. But mark your calendars for our next political forum, which will be the fourth Monday in September. Of course, county commissions, I think Dayton, Trotwood, mayor and, and, um, school board candidates will be on, will be in that forum. So I thank my team, I always wanna thank my team, sometimes I have to help them out, but that's okay. But I think it's important for you to know, we respect your time and we're gonna do it in a proper way. And they understand it, you understand it, and when you come to our candidates forum, it's not gonna be any, any name-calling, any, any, any insult. It's gonna be a good education forum. So I thank you, the team, for your assistance again, and I thank all the candidates and I'll see the best team in September. Thank you, Mr. President.
So with that, may God bless you, may God bless NAACP and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you very much.
It's coming up.